I'd like to call the meeting of the Johnson County Community College Board of Trustees for May 2016 to order. Please help me start the meeting with our Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Thank you. We have a lively audience tonight as we wrap up another semester. Seems like
those on campus are looking forward to some quiet time maybe this summer. Our first item on the agenda is the roll call and recognition of visitors. Ms. Schlicht?
This evening's visitors include Pamela Valentine, Henry Sandante, Steve Waddell, Mark Kralzek, John Roberts, Dave Kaluva, Eric Schroeder, Olivia Roberts, Camille Roberts, Cliff Roberts, and Roberta Evans-Lage.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming. The first, next item on the agenda is our open forum period. The open forum section of a board meeting is an opportunity for members of the community to provide comments to the board. We'll have one open forum period for each regularly scheduled board meeting. Comments are limited to five minutes unless a significant number of speakers plan to speak, in which case the chair may reduce that timeframe. In order to be recognized, individuals must register at the door at each board meeting prior to the open forum agenda item. When addressing the board, registered speakers are expected to be respectful and civil and should not address matters related to individual personnel matters with the college. As a practice, the college does not respond in this setting when matters concerned personnel issues or matters are being addressed through our established grievance or suggestion policies or otherwise under review by the college or the board. I'm not aware of anybody having signed up for this evening, so we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is awards and recognitions.
Thank you, Trustee Musil. I'd like to ask Karen Martley, our Associate Vice President of Continuing Education, to come to the podium. Karen?
And Mark and Debbie, if you'd come forward. Well, tonight I want to recognize two of our college employees who most recently completed the Kansas Community College Leadership Program. And this is a nine-month program where the participants go across the state and attend training in community colleges. They arrive on a Thursday where they start the training in the afternoon and go through Friday until I think about 1:00. But sometimes the drive is all day Wednesday to get there. So it's a rigorous program. They talk about issues in community colleges. They talk about leadership, development-related issues, trends, and also share a lot of best practices back and forth. They each complete an individual product or project as part of their completion of the program. But I think one of the most valuable pieces is all the networking that they do with their peers across the state. So this year, we have two graduates of the program I want to recognize. Mark Swells, Associate Professor and Librarian, and Debbie Rulo, Director of Continuing Education. They both completed all of the requirements of the program, so congratulations.
Karen, if I could, that's an outstanding program, and it's great to have, see Kansas as actually pulling people together like that for leadership roles. But I'd like to recognize trustee Jerry Cook, who in his role with the KACC was really instrumental in making this happen. So Jerry, an outstanding program.
Yeah, they sponsor the program. That's great. Next, I'd like to ask Alisa Waldman to come forward. She is our Regional Director of the JCC Small Business Development Center, and she will be presenting the next three awards tonight.
I brought the whole crew. So, good evening. It is lovely to be before you all. In 2015, the Small Business Development Center, which we call the SBDC, provided business advising and training to over 1,500 small business owners and aspiring entrepreneurs. The SBDC assisted these non-traditional students and community leaders in starting 74 businesses, raising $14.6 million in capital, and creating and retaining over 600 jobs. While we enjoy boasting about the economic impact of our SBDC team and the college, the real kudos belongs to our clients. Each year in March, the Kansas SBDC honors our clients at our Emerging and Existing Business of the Year Ceremony in Topeka, where the clients are presented on the floors of the Kansas House of Representatives, the Kansas Senate, and honored in an evening ceremony. This year, we also recognized one business as the Kansas SBDC Exporter of the Year, and that award winner is one of our JCC clients. We wanted to give all of you an opportunity to recognize these incredibly hard-working, dedicated, and innovative entrepreneurs. Our Emerging Business of the Year is Athletic Testing Solutions. You can wave. Identify yourselves. Owned by David Kaluva and Eric Schroeder in Overland Park. This innovative business saves the lives of young athletes by offering mobile heart checks. Our Existing Business of the Year is CTE Learning. Steve Waddell in Olathe. Steve designs interactive online learning platforms. And finally, our Exporting Business of the Year is Custom Storefronts, Inc., owned by John and Camille Roberts in Olathe. Custom Storefronts designs and builds retail storefronts for major brands all over the world. So please join me in congratulating these deserving businesses.
Which one's lying? Who's checking? I do, my name is John Roberts. I'm with Custom Storefronts. Camille and I founded this business in 2002, and we've worked extremely hard, I know, just like everybody else standing up here has, and took a lot of sweat equity and everything else to make the business happen. But the SBDC, we reached out to John years ago with help on a website when we really wanted to kind of take our business to the next level. And the SBDC has been fabulous. What a great group of people there. You should be very proud to have them as a part of the Johnson County Community College community. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
I have to ask you a question. Who came up with the concept of creative storefronts?
We, I worked for a company called Harding Glass years ago, and I started in their IT department and then moved on to what we called the National Accounts Program. And it was at that time that the door was opened to the fact that there were a lot of national retailers all over the country that wanted a more specialized product than what some of the major manufacturers offered. So they may want some twist on a glazing system that you would see in your buildings. They might want something special with that, or custom doors, things of that nature, and then ultimately a company like ourselves that can compile and fabricate all of that and then ship it to any of their locations anywhere in the United States and then all over the world. So in 2015 and 2016, we shipped to Russia, to the Philippines, to Mexico, to Guam, Saudi Arabia, UAV, all over, anywhere those retail national partners had, well, they had their international partners in terms of franchisees, and that's what we did. So it's just kind of a unique niche, but that's what, that's how I got into it.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Thank you very much.
Are you ready to introduce? Maybe you have somebody?
Oh, I do. Thank you. My two children. Clifford, if you would stand up. And Olivia. Clifford is my graduating eighth grader tonight. So I remember when I was a kid, we didn't graduate from eighth grade, but now these two have graduated from kindergarten and now eighth grade. Olivia's a junior.
A what?
Sorry. She'll be a junior next year. I'm already on to next year, Olivia, at St. James. And Clifford is also going to attend St. James. Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it.
Yeah, so I'm Steve Waddell with CTE Learning. We started with the SBDC back in 2003. And so one of the first things I did after completing the Kaufman Fast Track Program, when they talked about in the Fast Track Program that there was a thing called the SBDC. So the first thing I did was went and got someone assigned to me, and that was Melinda Bryan Smith. And since 2003, we've been working, Stephanie Landis, everybody else here has been helping us. We create interactive online education. So we do things like industry certification training for video game design and web design and sustainable landscape and building green and all sorts of crazy kind of new career areas. But what's really been important with the SBDC is they've helped us navigate, you know, from 2003 to now, we've had to navigate not only expansion, sometimes contraction because of the economic downturn we all had. Remember that? These guys, this team has been with us every step of the way. And as entrepreneurs, you really do not exist in a vacuum. If you do, you will die from the vacuum. These are the people who come to you, they're there to be purely to support you. Their whole agenda is to make you better and to help you grow. And there's a real blessing in that for every entrepreneur. And so for me, the big excitement for coming here tonight was to be able to say, guys, you've got an incredible team here at JCC that's really helping our economy here. And I hope you guys always continue to support them because they do wonderful things for those of us who are also trying to help build the economy. So thanks for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve.
Again, I'm David Kaluva, and this is Eric Schroeder with Athletic Testing Solutions. And we really developed our program with, as the growing concern of young athletes in the news of dying from undetected heart abnormalities, cardiac arrest. We started the program a few years ago, and it became pretty obvious that it isn't just athletes or the top-level athletes, and it's not just that the kids are dropping dead on the court or field or at home. But because of the quality of screening that we put together with our protocol, we identify a lot of underlying heart concerns that can affect the kids' health in the very near future or long-term as well. Let me leave it out. One of our, one of the very important parts when we put our program together was making it very convenient and affordable for the masses so that any parent or child that wanted to get their heart screened had the ability to do so, which we have fortunately accomplished very well and have now gotten out and partner with 15 of the public school districts in and around the Kansas City area, as well as a number of private schools and sports organizations, and continuing to raise awareness and get the word out.
If I may, I just want to say thank you for your work. I had a cousin in 1992, who I believe was 26-years-old, that died because from all that we could ascertain, her, the electricity and her heart stopped. So she was home with her two children, and sadly, we had to bury her. And my family participated in many studies trying to determine, many of us had tachycardia and other heart issues, so I just wanted to say thank you for that.
That, a lot of families that are affected by this, much more than most people realize.
I also have a question. Do you have any plans to expand it to possibly include the neurological testing?
We have definitely looked very closely at the concussion baseline, and the important part of that is having the proper follow-up when a child potentially has a concussion. That is a program we're looking at.
Okay, great.
Do you, what are your backgrounds?
I come from a business background, family-owned business for a number of years.
I'm on the clinical side. I've been in healthcare for 15 years in a variety of roles, but then startups with physician groups and that. And this was something that kind of was born out of one of those original businesses I was part of. And it's tremendously rewarding to us to find kids that have issues. It's not fun to call the parents and tell them that their kid's got a problem, but it certainly is rewarding. And most of the time, things we find can be fixed, and we certainly can circumvent those tragic events from happening, so.
Thank you for your service. In your partnership with the schools, do you then screen all students, or is it an on-call? How do these, how does your service connect with the families?
There's a lot of controversy out there about what the type of testing. The NCA just went through kind of a dress-down, their new medical director by a lot of their member schools because of wanting to mandate EKG screenings. And it was really tough for them to go about that process. One of the things we wanted to make sure of was, we weren't going to mandate this. We do it on a voluntary basis, but we do partner with the schools and offer it out to them. So the schools are our partners in letting parents know this is available to them. They give us space to use to set up our clinic and to have the kids come directly to the school rather than...
Because I'm assuming that, maybe my assumption is totally wrong, that most families would get this service through their primary care physician if they thought of that for their teenager or younger children?
Well, part of that issue is, not to get too deep in the weeds, but you typically have to have a reason for insurance to pay for something. You can't just go in and say, hey, I want to test, and have your insurance pay for it. So that's issue A. Issue B is primary care doctors don't do the type of testing we do. They're done in cardiology offices. And we work very closely with a pediatric cardiologist who's our medical director here in town, and he supports our program wholeheartedly and really gives it his all, and it makes us one of the better services in the country right now, so.
And I'm sorry to delay this, but one further question is, how many other services like yours are you aware of in the country?
There's really no other services in the country that do it like we do. We do it like a cardiologist's office would do. You get an EKG, you get a full-blown echocardiogram done, and every, that whole, the whole process and testing. So there really aren't any others. A lot of the other programs that go on in the country that are trying to screen for sudden cardiac death are just doing EKG-only type testing, and it is not very good.
Thank you.
That's great. Do you have a mobile unit outside?
Didn't bring it with us tonight.
Okay.
You know, I should certainly recognize the Small Business Development Center also. And we got in touch with Alisa Waldman early on when we first put this project together, and they have been extremely helpful. We've really benefited from the relationship. We appreciate you making it possible.
Thank you.
That would be cool. That'd be very cool.
I suspect when they get neurological testing, trustee Lindstrom, they'll come here first.
That's good.
Very pleased to introduce now Henry Sandate. Henry was selected by this board last Thursday as the successor trustee to Dr. Bob Drummond, who will resign from this board effective June 30, 2016, and Henry will take over on July 1, 2016. Wanted to offer an opportunity for you to introduce yourself to the community.
Thank you very much. Well, good evening, and I want to say it's a real pleasure and an honor to be here before you all and be the incoming Board of Trustees come July 1. I just want to say it was amazing to watch those recipients that came before me here. And I think what it really says about Johnson County Community Colleges, how this institution really touches all aspects of the welfare and the success of Johnson County and the surrounding areas. So I mean, what a testimony, what a compliment to what you all do out there, and what you all do over here sitting on this board, and the leadership that President Soppich provides and his staff. So I am so honored, and I'm so pleased, and I'm so passionate about everything that goes on here. And I want to do everything I possibly can to sustain the success and the contributions that Johnson County Community College makes to Johnson County. And I just want to say out to the people in the audience here, the instructors, the administrators and such, I'm available. Anytime you want to contact me, please do so. I want to do everything I can to make this institution a place where you want to be and contribute and be the very best you can be at what you do in transforming and changing the lives of the students. And anyone else who comes into this institution, from the Norman Art Center to, you know, every aspect, the gymnasium, to participate in sports activities, the art center, so the culinary arts and such. So once again, I am just, I'm walking on cloud nine. Somebody asked how my week has been, and it's been phenomenal. It's been amazing to have people come out and acknowledge, you know, my being appointed and complimenting me and just, you know, getting behind me and the support and such. And so I appreciate all that you all do. I appreciate all that you all do out there as instructors and administrators, and I'm just looking forward for July 1 to come around so I can be a part of it all. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you very much for coming. I think it's safe to say, Henry, you brought that passion last week, and you kept it up to this week, and that's what we're looking forward to because you're excited about this and excited about education as a whole. Thank you for coming out today. The next item is our college lobbyists report. Mr. Carter?
I remember my water up this evening with me in the event that I have a similar episode as last month. It's not often that I get to follow good news with delivering some good news, and so I do have some for you this evening. The veto session came to an end at about 3:30 in the morning on Monday, May 2. It is one of the shortest legislative sessions in Kansas history. I think it was the fourth shortest in Kansas history, which is interesting since last year was one of the longest that we've had. The other good news is that not only are legislators out of town when they would have been in Topeka at this time last year, but relatively across the board as it relates to the community college sector, very little harm was done. And that's something that we need to make sure that we recognize. I would follow that up by saying, we may not be done yet. Many folks think that there will be a special session that is called. I think a lot of that depends on the findings of the Supreme Court, and I'll talk a little bit about that a little bit later in my report. The big piece that needed to be completed in the veto session was the budget, and that was completed. It passed the House with just the necessary amount of votes required, and 22 to 18 in the Senate. I call the budget unbalanced in my report, and I call attention to that because the requirement that the legislature has is that they must pass a constitutionally balanced budget for the governor to review and sign. The bill that arrives on his desk will require some cuts to make it balance, to the tune of over two years, about $185 million, again, from KDOT, about $92 million from Capers by not making the fourth payment in the fourth quarter of the fiscal year. There is some tobacco money that has been placed in the budget. It is probably good news that they did not securitize the master settlement for the tobacco money, which means we'll continue to be able to manage that money at the state level, and hopefully it will at some point return to where it needs to go, which is for children's programs and early childhood education programs. The, all of this happens, and then a day or two later, while the credit rating wasn't negatively downgraded, there was a negative memo or recognition, if you want to call it that, sent by the Moody's Credit Rating Organization. And so I think that, again, a lot of folks take a look at that, that type of thing, and the reason was specifically for sweeping money out of the bonds of the proceeds of KDOT. Again, like I mentioned, there were no cuts to the community college system yet. That is good news. But again, we still have to get out of whatever cuts may be made through the allotment process granted to the governor, not only by law, but by specific proviso in the budget bill. And so we'll see what happens when that bill gets signed and moved on down the road. The, I would say that as a result, and about the time that we were meeting last month, the consensus revenue estimating group had just completed their meetings. I don't know that we knew all of the results yet, but they did once again revise for the second time in this fiscal year the budget numbers. And so that helped April come through at about $2.8 million ahead of what the revenue expectations were. That's great. The budget that was passed on to the governor has about a $24 to $27 million ending balance in it. You have to assume then that May and June, we have two months left to complete this fiscal year, will be on target, if not below. Considering April is your big tax collection month, I think a lot of people have their eyes on what will happen over the course of the next two months as we approach the end of the fiscal year. The other piece of good news is, and I did report on this, but it hadn't, the actual work had not been completed yet, the JCC GED Accelerator inclusion piece was included in a conference committee report that was ultimately agreed to, signed and agreed to by both the House and the Senate, and that bill has been sent to the governor for approval. The legislature, while it was debating and trying to figure out how to get out of town, rejected a proposed tax fix. There was a bill out there that would have repealed the LLC S corp income tax pass-through provisions that were passed in 2012. That bill failed on a vote of 45 to 74 in the House, which means it didn't even need to go to the Senate. It was an up or down type of vote. It wasn't something that was debatable. The tax lid that I've talked about throughout the year, or the amendments to the tax lid legislation passed, the legislature also in the final day, final time period. The good news about that is it added some additional exemptions for local units of government. And the continued good news is that community colleges are still not subject to anything that is contained in the tax lid legislation that was passed last year or the amendment that was passed this year. Another piece of good news, no bad things happened to Capers. There was lots of concern about a final average salary calculation, the way it would make changes to the way the final average salary was calculated. The, that particular piece was ultimately amended down to just be a reporting function, and in the final analysis, nothing related to that particular piece was included in the Capers legislation that passed or was forwarded on to the governor for signature. Finally, just one other piece of information that relates to other legislation, if you will, that moved through the process, and that was a conference committee report related to guns. I only report on this because it's interesting how the issue came up. JCC, as well as many other local units of government or public building institutions, have filed for a four-year exemption. There was a timeline process about how you could file for that exemption. The exemption was to last four years, but there was not necessarily a closure on that particular piece included in the original legislation. One of the amendments to a bill, I happened to be in the hearing when, in February, when the particular legislator was present to offer the technical amendments, they weren't discussed because typically a technical amendment means nothing substantive changes to a bill. We find out after the fact that what the technical amendment did was move the implementation date up to July 1 of 2017, where I think many folks thought that the four-year exemption might go on through the end of December. Now, I have communicated with our general counsel, their group that meets together on a regular basis. They've been aware of that earlier date as being part of the conversation. But I think it speaks a little bit to how business is conducted in Topeka, and that's the primary reason that I report it to you, is that when you talk about something that is technical, it shouldn't necessarily change the substantive impact of a bill or a piece of legislation. So finally, earlier this week on Tuesday, some of you may have tuned in, the Supreme Court of Kansas held arguments on the Gannon case to determine whether or not the legislature met the equitable portion of school funding. There was lots of hard questions asked. If you listened, it sounded like the tone of the court was not necessarily in favor of the state. However, we don't know what the court's ultimate decision is going to be. Again, we are going to see things unlike we've ever seen before come November with respect to at least four members of the Supreme Court who are up for retention. And there will be an all-out campaign with lots of money. be an all-out campaign with lots of money being sent to Kansas that you'll never see reported because it's not required to be reported. And there will be campaigns likely on the radio, on TV, and on billboards and on mailers working to have four of the justices not retained. They're not politicians, and this is new to them, and I've mentioned this before in my reports, and I think it's probably one of the most important things we'll be observing this election cycle. It won't be the House and Senate races. There's already going to be some changes there that we're aware of. This is a big deal, and, and what I've been telling folks is, is if you're okay with each level of government saying the same thing, then you need to vote accordingly. If, on the other hand, you think that we ought to have a system that was orchestrated by the folks who set up this country that has a checks and balances system to it, you also need to vote accordingly, and you need to pay attention to, to what is going on at that level. It's, it's going to be a big deal, and it will impact Kansas for a long time to come on some very major issues that really take up a small amount of the court's time. So, so that's going to be interesting to watch. That, that's kind of an interesting way to end a, a report on the fact that the, the court, the high court is reviewing the school funding case. That will probably determine whether or not we're back this summer for a special session. Like I said, many think we will be to address, to address those issues. And then finally, the legislature will be back on June 1st, which is also the filing deadline for folks who are interested in, in running for public office, for signee die, which is generally the formal closing of the, of the legislature. In fact, it's not necessarily required attendance. Many times people don't attend. We're not aware of any issues that need to be addressed or any actual business that needs to be taken care of on the first, but there's still some time left between now and then, and, and the governor still has some bills that are on his desk that have not been signed or, or vetoed or, or addressed. So we'll see what happens there as to whether or not we actually have some real business to take care of on June 4th, or if it's just a formal closing of the, of the 2016 legislature. So, Mr. Chair, I would stop there and attempt to address any questions that there may be.
Questions for Mr. Carter?
Hi.
Trustee Ingram.
Will you remind me, when would a special session, when would you predict that that would actually occur, should it be needed?
Yeah, I think it could occur any time.
Any time.
Any time between the time a signee die occurs and December 31st, 2016. It is an election year. That is something that, that leadership certainly is aware of, and, and those folks want to be out working. There is some thought that it could come in September, which is a timeframe that would be after the, the primary, but it could come as early as, as July.
Okay. Thank you.
Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carter, why, it's my understanding that there's some people unhappy with this bill. Why are they unhappy with the, with the Kansas Supreme Court?
I think, just like any, any particular body that is involved in public policy, you're always going to have supporters and detractors, and, and some in, in legis, in the legislature think that the court is an activist court, though I'm using words that they would use. And, and so depending on what the issue may be, and sometimes it can be a moving target, the, the effort would be to not retain a judge, and we've never really seen that type of effort play out in Kansas. I think last election cycle was the first time we saw something come fairly close for, for a particular Supreme Court justice to not be retained. He was in fact retained, but I think-
So, so if I may, it's like a power struggle, sort of like when FDR tried to pack the courts. There's some members of the government that are upset with policy rulings by members of the court. Would that be a fair characterization?
Yes, it's not any different than we have a nominee at the federal level right now who likely will not have a hearing. I mean, you, you see it at all levels, but I think your, I think your analysis is, is correct.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. But, but Dick, isn't the main issue of the, of this issue of reappointment, reelections, reappointments, over who should make the decision on what's proper funding for K through 12 schools? Aren't there legislators that believe that it's their responsibility to set the, the appropriation and not the Supreme Court's responsibility to question them on that?
I think that's one piece. I think if you look at some of the groups who have already been public in their advocacy for not retaining Supreme Court justices, the issue is a little bit different, but it is, that is one piece of the overall puzzle.
I guess my only comment, I have to always comment at the end, is that good news is clearly relative.
They're kind of-
The good news is that although higher education has been battered and children's programs have been cut, and our highway funds are being spent for anything other than highways, and Capers will not get a $93 million contribution this year, but it will be put off for two years and paid back with interest.
Eight percent.
Pinky swear, as the Kansas Star said. That, at some point, I sit up here and almost feel guilty that we are, are not part of the cut. I hate to say that, but everything else has been rather dreary, and we have been, and I think for good reason because people recognize our value, but there are lots of things going on. I appreciate you mentioning judicial independence because if the voters of Kansas kick off one or two or three or four Supreme Court justices in this election, then every future Supreme Court justice will be looking over their shoulder at political interest groups, and they'll be asked to follow the governor and the legislature no matter what, and we will have a different kind of court and a different kind of society. So I appreciate your bringing that up. I would suspect a, if the court were to order schools not to open, which was the ultimate threat, then the special session would have to be probably before mid-August.
Well, and, and even as Trustee Sharp mentioned, it could be in the month of June if, if the deadline to not fund schools is July 1. So it could be earlier.
The governor calls a special session, right? So it's essentially at the declaration of the governor?
I don't know who all, I don't know if a certain number of legislators on this body, a certain number of you can call a special meeting, or I can call a special meeting. I'm not sure at the state level, but-
I'd have to visit my Constitution, Kansas Constitution class notes for that one.
Thank you.
Dr. Stojkovic, anything?
Dick, I got a quick question for you. So the elections are coming up in November. Is every representative in the Senate up for election?
Yeah, all 165 Kansas legislators, so 40 in the Senate, 165 in the House.
So if it goes different, if, if people are put in those positions that are different from who they are today, is it possible to go back in and change gun legislation?
It is, and, and it could be. I don't think it'll happen immediately, but, but certainly it could happen.
Important deadlines. June 1 is the filing deadline for all candidates. I think May, June, some, early June is the deadline to change your party registration.
Same as filing, June 1.
June 1. July 12 is the last day to register for the August primary. July 13 is the first day to ask for advanced ballot.
No.
No.
July 13 is when ballots are mailed.
Ballots are mailed.
You can ask for an advanced ballot right now, and you should. If you want one, please call mail.
I know we have representative legal women voters here who will be out helping people figure out how to vote in Kansas and register in Kansas. Thank you, Mr. Carter, for your service this year. Another very active year protecting our interests and trying to figure out exactly what's going on in Topeka.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Audit Committee report. The Audit Committee met this past Thursday, May 5th at 9:00 AM in this, in this room. The first item on the agenda was meeting with our audit partners, Ruben Brown CPAs, Caleb Lilly, Catherine Gergis, and Courtney Highland were here and explained the budget process that will include a lot of people on our, on our campus and Dr. Larson's area to make sure that our year-end budget is, is audited appropriately for a public institution. One of the things that Mr. Lilly mentioned, and I'll bring up here, you will, you did not get the minutes in this packet because there wasn't time. They will be in next month's packet, but as head of the, of the audit, he asked that anybody on this board that had any suspicions or indications or concerns about any fraudulent or improper activity, make those known to him, and in the minutes, you will have his phone number and email. It's always important that the leadership of any institution be aware of that and report anything to audit, auditors if they know about it. Our internal audit had completed a, an audit of our payroll department and reported on that. We reported on quarterly projects that are ongoing with the audit, internal audit, the follow-up matrix of what was, what has been accomplished in various audits on campus. We reported on the JCC Ethics Report line, which is our place to report any concerns you have on campus. You can do so anonymously, or you can do so by giving your name, and we also compared those with the help of Janelle and her team to external audit benchmarks to see how we're doing in terms of how many of ours are anonymous versus how many people give their name, how many, how many of the complaints are validated and how many are not, how, what's the turnaround time, and in all instances, we're at or near the national benchmark average. We had a report on the Behavioral Intervention Team, looking for students and others on campus that exhibit behavior that may need some intervention so we can provide them assistance. Dr. Weber went through the student complaint process, which is being driven by federal regulations to improve the way we report, track, and centralize how student complaints are kept, and then we had a couple of executive briefings as well. Next meeting was set for August 4th, 2016. Be happy to try to answer any questions. I don't think Janelle is here to help. There she is. I thought she was not going to help me at all.
[laughing]
Are there any questions about the Audit Committee? If not, the next item is the Collegial Steering Committee, which I participated in with members of the Faculty Association, the Faculty Senate, Ed Affairs, and the President's Cabinet. Trustee Sharp was there as well. You weren't able, you weren't at that meeting.
I had it.
That's right. You had a, you had an excused absence. We talked about the structure and the impact and the importance of the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, to which this college has belonged for a long time, the amount of money that we pay as dues to that based on full-time students or student head count, and its impact, and an ongoing discussion about whether or not the risk benefit of that is, the cost benefit of that is of enough value to maintain, and it was a good discussion on that effort. We also talked about collegial steering in general, kind of reviewed the year to see if we were on track to, to accomplish what the committee was supposed to accomplish, which is much more of a report, discuss, and converse effort than a committee that's supposed to do something and go take action because there are other places on campus that do that. I'd be happy to answer any questions about collegial steering. If not, we'll move on to Human Resources. Trustee Ingram.
Yes, Chair Musa. We did not meet this month, and so our next meeting will be the first Sunday in July.
Thank you. Learning Quality, Trustee Cross.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Learning Quality Committee met on May 2nd, 2016, at 8:00 AM here in this room. Deborah Williams, an Associate Professor of Science, reported on her fall 2014 sabbatical project during which she completed her remaining coursework requirements for a philosophy in MA. As part of her project, she developed an applied ethics unit for her biology, a 130 course, which applied to, among other things, bioethics and medical ethics. Gretchen Shirck and Denise Griffey provided an update on the Trade Adjustment Assistance Community College and Career Training Grant Program. I love being in government because things have such long names. TAACC T grant. Gretchen Shirck, Grant Program Director, and Denise Griffey, the TAACC T Research Analyst, provided updates on the TAACC-
C C.
C missing. An accelerated collaborative technology training services, the ACTTS. Gretchen reviewed the progress of the four-year, 2.5 million federal grant that targets four programs, computer information systems, information technology networking, web development, and health information systems. The grant supports innovative programs that help eligible students complete programs faster and prepare them to meet employer expectations. Denise explained that the primary goal of the grant is to recruit, retrain, retain, exit, and employ students. Dennis Arjo, the newly elected president of the Faculty Association and Chair of the Educational Affairs Committee, brought forward curriculum items to be approved by the Learning Quality Committee for the 2016-2017 academic year. One new hospitality course, HMGT 100, will provide college credit to students coming from high school culinary programs. All changes presented will be sent to the full board for approval and can be seen subsequently in the consent agenda portion of this board packet. Ms. Clarissa Craig, Associate Vice President of Instruction, presented four agreements. The neurodiagnostic technology program has been added to existing 2015-2016 agreements and the 2016-2017 renewal agreements. Complete details can be found subsequently in the consent agenda portion of this board packet. And J.D. Gragg, Articulation Development Coordinator, presented information regarding the updated agreement that we have with Central Methodist University for the Associate of Arts, Science, and Applied Science degrees. This agreement guarantees that college students, JCCC students, excuse me, graduate with an AA or an AAS degree can enroll at CMU as juniors. CMU will accept as many as 88 hours from JCCC. Let me ask, what were the counties affected in Missouri for the metro rate? Those are just the border counties, right?
Yeah.
We can go into Howard County where CMU's at.
Clay, Platt, Jackson, Cass?
Yeah, I think that's right.
My family had a love-hate relationship with Missouri. Mine's mostly been love, so I think everything we do with Missouri is great, and I, I think with the metro rate and then a relationship like this with CMU is just wonderful, so I wanted to commend everyone involved in that. Mr. Chair, this will complete the minutes for me, and obviously they're included in this month's packet.
Any questions for Trustee Cross, who wore his MU colors today?
Oh, no. I don't know what it is with you. I mean, I get, I get a Jayhawk, and then I wear black and gold.
[laughing]
I got, look-
Purple next.
Purple cup. All right. You're good. All right, we'll move on to Management Committee. Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Management Committee met at 8:00 AM on Wednesday, May 4th, here in this room. The information of that management meeting is included in pages 1 through 20 of your board packet. The items that we're about to discuss were vetted thoroughly in that meeting. First item, Rachel Lear, Associate Vice President of Financial Services, reviewed the management budget recommendations. We had a detailed budget workshop last month, and we started this whole process, as you'll recall, with our budget timeline last December. The, I guess a key point in that whole information is that our mill levy for 2016-17 will remain the same, and our legal budget will be acted on at the Board of Trustees in August of 2016. So we're on our timeline. The update brought us up to speed in terms of where we are with the budget. So I, I would like to make this recommendation. It's a recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the fiscal year 2016-17 management budget, subject to adjustments required when final beginning balances and assessed valuation amounts have been determined, and I'll make that motion. And when there's a second, I'd like to speak to it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion, Dr. Cook?
We've had some discussion in the past about the management budget being approved at this point. We have a number of issues that need to be acted upon beginning, well, actually before July 1, but as we begin the new school year, and so we'll make the necessary adjustments, adjustments in August when we get the mill levy, but it's, it's imperative to help our administration facilitate the process of getting a school year ready to approve the management budget at this time.
Other discussion? Other discussion? If not, all in favor say yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries with one negative vote. Dr., or Trustee Cross?
Yeah, I guess, I would like, we, we vetted the, the budget. I'd, I'd like to know what Trustee Cross's exemption to the budget is.
We're talking about the budget on pages, excuse me, 1 and 2, right? Management meeting minutes?
Well, I, I guess my question relates to, we, we've had a number of discussions in management meeting each month. We've had the budget workshop, and there's been no abstention, so I guess I'm just curious what your reason for voting against the budget when we've had all these discussions is.
Sure, and numerous times here at these meetings and others, I've expressed reservations and disagreements I have, probably slight, but the vast majority of the time, I agree with you. Here, it's no disrespect to you, Trustee Cook. A fundamental difference in opinion as to how, I've said numerous times, we have collected revenue in specific items in the budgetary guidelines, the frees on the hiring of any new full-time individuals, and while I have confidence in this board and its ability to do what it thinks, it thinks is best, I just- best, I disrespect the disagree on this point.
Well, I would just say that, first of all, it's not any disrespect to the Chair of the committee. I just think it's important that when someone has a differing view, they may have ideas as to how we might come to a total consensus on the budget, particularly when we haven't had a lot of reaction to that during the meetings. I know that you have been concerned about tuition increases. We're all, we're all concerned about what our tuition rate is. But if you have ideas about where we can generate revenue in spite of raised tuition, I think those should be shared in our meetings, and we can move forward. Just curious. And please, it's no disrespect to any individual chair. I think it's a, it's a vote of how we move forward in consensus with supporting the college and its huge budget, not just one or two items within the budget.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Sure.
Thank you, Trustee Cook. I appreciate, I guess I'm somewhat surprised that you're surprised. Out of respect to you and other members of the Management Committee, I really don't work to voice my opinion or hold up the meetings in ways that I think are not going to be productive. Nevertheless, for an actual record here, I am noting that I disagree with certain things that we do here. I'm surprised that you're surprised. With respect to budget and perhaps revenue enhancement opportunities, I think we would all agree that Topeka have a greater commitment to programs and institutions that we have by statutes, long passed by this government, to pay for the things that they've committed to do for its citizens, including but not limited to community college and higher education, along with all of education. True, we've been held harmless here. I can debate all night if you want, but I think you probably know my points, so I'm happy for the opportunity to talk about it. I'm not sure if I brought up my points in the committee meeting that you would consider them. You're a fair man. I've said that to you many times privately, and I appreciate your leadership of that committee. But I'm not sure that it would change the opinion of the administration or this board that I aired repeatedly and consistently my objections that I've noted, and we can go back, throughout the last two years, when I have consistently and repeatedly voted against the budgetary guidelines, and in doing so now. It's no disrespect to you or this committee. It's just my opinion and belief.
Well, we have a vote of six to one. Moving forward, five to one. Moving forward, I would, I would hope that we could have those ideas at our Management Committee meetings displayed, and we can vet those accordingly.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, I apologize, Mr. Chair Cook, Chair of the Committee. I will gladly raise any concerns that I have in management.
Thank you.
I think it's important for everybody to understand, we will not vote on the budget until there's a public hearing held in August. Between now and August, if, I know the administration and everybody in the budget process is open to suggestions, ideas about where we're spending too much, where we're spending too little. Revenue enhancements means tax increases on the mill levy or some other fund. Tuition increases means more revenue to the college. If we don't do those, where's the revenue going to come from, or where are you going to cut? So, between now and August, if anybody on, that's listening in the audience, or listening, watching this later, has ideas, or is part of this board, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to find better ways to do things and to suggest them, and see if we can find a way to reach a consensus. It's not important that we have a 7-0 vote up here, but it is important that all ideas are put on the table, so we know the consequences of them, and that we all vote as informed as we can. So, I think this has been a good start on that, and I know we have several months now to improve on it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next seven recommendations are for bids, requests for proposals. Each of these are budget-included items that we have adopted. The first bid is for the Hospitality and Culinary Academy Rooftop Solar Photofluoroscopic Design and Installation, RFP 16-052. This project is funded from private dollars as well as from the Sustainability Fund. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accepts the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposal from MC Power Companies, Inc., in the amount of $221,028, plus an additional $22,102 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $243,130 for the HCA Rooftop Solar PV Design and Installation, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation for the Hospitality and Culinary Academy Rooftop Solar Project. Any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries unanimously.
It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $772,390 from MTS Contracting, Inc., plus an additional $77,239 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for a total expenditure not to exceed $849,629 for the JCCC Campus Masonry Repairs, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation on the Campus Masonry Repair. All in favor, or any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries unanimously.
Next is the Studio A Camera Package Bid, 16-108. This is, this is in part to increase our security on campus, and we're not only putting in digital, but improving the number of camera locations that we have. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the lowest acceptable bids of $112,407.15 from the B&amp;H Photo and Electronics Corporation, $6,348.30 from Conference Technologies, Inc., $3,590 from Woodgate Sales, LLC, for a total expenditure of $122,346.45 for the Studio A Camera Package, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries unanimously.
I'm sorry. Next is the bid for the Carlson West Garage Post-Tension Concrete Repairs, bid 16-110. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the low bid of $139,500 from John Rohr Contracting Company, Inc., plus an additional $41,850 to allow for contingencies for possible unforeseen costs, for total expenditures not to exceed $181,350 for the JCCC Carlson West Garage Post-Tension Concrete Repairs, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation for the Carlson West Garage Post-Tension Concrete Repairs. I assume we already took care of the Pre-Tension Concrete Repairs. Is there any discussion? All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries unanimously.
The Management Committee reviewed three RFPs for on-call services. First was the Annual Contract for On-Call Mechanical, Electrical, and Plumbing, or MEP Engineering Services, RFP 16-088. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposals from the Clark, Anderson Partners, and Langford, Fendler, and Associates for the establishment of annual contracts for an on-call MEP Engineering Services, at a total annual expenditure not to exceed $150,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation for Mechanical Engineering and Plumbing Engineering Services on an on-call basis. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries unanimously.
It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposals from Heritage Electric, LLC, and Pro Circuit Incorporated for the establishment of annual contracts for on-call electrical repairs and installation services at a total annual expenditure not to exceed $125,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation for electrical on-call contracting. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries unanimously.
Our final recommendation is for the Annual Contract for On-Call Architectural Services, RFP 16-092. It is the recommendation of the Management Committee that the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation of the college administration to approve the proposals from the Clark, Anderson Partners, and BBN Architects, Inc., for the establishment of annual contracts for on-call architectural services at a total annual expenditure not to exceed $200,000, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adopt the recommendation for on-call architectural services. Any discussion? Dr. Cook?
I would add, Mr. Chair, that Trustee Cross asked a good question during that discussion about the need for, whether it's on-call of these services or architectural services. And while we have a very talented staff, there are very unique kinds of things that we need to have support on. And we had very good discussion regarding that, that topic.
All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries unanimously.
In other committee, work information was presented about an agreement with Honeywell Federal Manufacturing and Technologies, which can be found in the Consent Agenda on pages 42 to 43 of the board packet. The Management Committee also received several reports from staff. Rachel Learz provided a quarterly update on college investments in the Kansas Municipal Investment Pool. Mr. Borchers presented the sole source report as well as a summary of awarded bids between $25,000 and $100,000. That summary is found on page 3 to 4 of the board packet. Rex Hayes, Associate Vice President, Campus Services and Facility Planning, gave a monthly update on capital infrastructure projects, and that report is on page 20 of the packet. That, Mr. Chairman, concludes my report.
Questions for Dr. Cook or members of the Management Committee? If not, we'll move on then to the President's Recommendations for Action, which start with the Treasurer's Report. Trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Treasurer's Report is in the board packet, pages 23 to 33, and it includes the report for the month ending March 31st, 2016. Some items of note include, on page 1 of the Treasurer's Report, and this is in reference to Trustee Cross's governmental acronyms here, it's the General Post-Secondary Technical Education Fund Summary. As of March 31st, 75% of the college's fiscal year had expired. Ad valorem tax distribution of $2,709,421 was received in March, as mentioned last week, but it was distributed as follows. In the general fund, $2,556,400. The special assessment fund, $9,006. The capital outlay fund was $144,015, for a total of, as mentioned previously, $2,709,400. During the March, during March, the college made semi-annual payments, number 13 of 20, on the Series 2009 Certificates of Participation, and those are issued for the construction of the Olathe Health Education Center, or OHC. The college's unencumbered cash balance as of March 31st in all funds was $93.6 million, which is approximately $13.2 million greater than the same time last year. Expenditures in the primary operating fund are within approved budgetary limits, and it is the recommendation of the college administration that the Board of Trustees approve the Treasurer's Report for the month ending March 31st, 2016, and I would make that motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the Treasurer's Report. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose, no? Motion carries unanimously. We will move on to the Facilities Naming Committee Report, a, not, not a frequent report, and Trustee Ingram's going to bless us with that.
And, Mr. Chair, I would like to go ahead and just share a little bit of history before reading the minutes and providing a recommendation to you all. Tonight, as trustee liaison to the college's facility naming committee, I have the pleasure of reporting on a naming opportunity that was recently considered in exchange for financial contribution from the Jack F. and Glenna Y. Wiley Charitable Foundation. As many of you know, the current president of the JCCC Foundation is a local businessman and entrepreneur named Brad Bergman. Brad is perhaps best known as CEO and chairman of Midwest Trust, FCI Advisors. He has served on the foundation board for more than 16 years. His companies have donated nearly $150,000 to the college during this time, particularly in the form of sponsorships of some enchanted evening. Brad and his wife Libby are also past chairs of this gala. In 2015, Brad notified Kate Allen and President Sobchak of the passing of a longtime friend of his named Jack Wiley. Jack was also a longtime friend of a man named Tom McDonnell. Tom was a CEO of DST, DST, excuse me, Systems in Kansas City for about 30 years, and more recently served as CEO of the Kaufman Foundation. When Jack died in December 2014, he named Brad and Tom the co-trustees of his charitable estate. Brad and Tom spent much of 2015 determining who the recipients would be of the Wiley estate. Brad convinced Tom to take a look at the JCCC Hospitality Culinary Academy because Jack had owned several companies during his life that were involved in the meat industry. Tom and Brad toured the facility in October. They met with President Sobchak and Faculty Chef Felix Sturmer. Following the meeting, Tom and Brad confirmed they would like to direct a $1 million gift to JCCC Foundation and have the academy named Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. After consulting with HCA leadership, it was determined the purpose of the gift would be twofold. First, to fund the completion of a barbecue pavilion area adjacent to the Hospitality and Culinary Academy, with total expenditures not to exceed 25% of the gift, or $250,000. This is important to the donors in that it is in keeping with Jack's professional ties to the meat industry. This was also part of the original vision of the building, but was value engineered out of the final design. HCA leadership will work with facilities on the design and completion of this outdoor classroom and event space. The remaining funds, at least $750,000, will establish an endowment within the JCCC Foundation. Annual earnings will underwrite travel expenses related to competitions, staff development, and study abroad opportunities. There are not college resources readily available to cover the breadth of these opportunities, and it is believed this is the best use of the funds to ensure the internationally renowned reputation of the academy. The Facility Naming Committee convened in February to consider this nomination of a named facility. The committee reviewed the proposal and subsequent gift agreement, and was satisfied with the background check performed on the donor and his related companies. So, I'll continue with the minutes of our February meeting, which was held on February 25th. We met at 4:00 p.m. in the vodka room. Those present were Kate Allen, Brian Biggs, Mary Birch, Ann Hunt, Nancy Ingram, Greg Musil, Ron Palchik, Alex Rowe, and Dr. Joe Sobchak. The purpose of the meeting was to review the nomination for facilities naming forms submitted on behalf of the co-trustees of the estate of Jack Wiley, and if appropriate, to recommend to the trustees the naming of the facility in the donor's honor. The community reviewed the nomination form. Joe Sobchak and Kate Allen provided special insights about the nominee and the timeline leading up to the gift proposal. After discussion and later review of the gift agreement, the committee approved to recommend to the Board of Trustees the following naming of the facility. The JCCC Hospitality and Culinary Academy would be named Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. Therefore, Mr. Chairman, I bring forward the following recommendation, that the Facilities Naming Committee recommends the Board of Trustees accept the recommendation to name our Hospitality and Culinary Academy in honor of the donor, naming it Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy, and I so move. Second.
Been moved and seconded to name the HCA facility, the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy. I was part of the committee. We have a committee that is, that includes students, faculty, administration, foundation, Board of Trustees members, and that's who met in February to review this. It's a sizable gift. We don't get as many of these as we would like for a million dollars. I think it's unique because it mixes bricks and mortars with program, and that endowment will allow future students to benefit from something other than simply bricks and mortar. And as we go into our next 50 program, we know that bricks and mortar are important, but programming is important, and so we'll be looking for people to help with that. Trustee Lindstrom?
I have a question, and I can ask it now, and I'm going to, by the way, I will be in favor of it, and I would have seconded the motion. But I have a question regarding building naming, and this in particular, not the person, but the, I guess, the philosophy of doing this. And should I ask it now, or wait till after the vote?
It's fine now. I mean, I will do my best. We have naming policies that are in place at the, at the college, and they, they look at several different factors, including a sizable donation, including longtime outstanding service to the college. All of those recommendations have to come in through a nominating form. A background check is run.
I'm comfortable with all of that, that that's being done. My, my, my specific question would be, does this become a contractual obligation on the part of the college if we vote on it, or can a future board turn around or contradict what we do today?
There's a naming agreement, which includes both the expectations of both parties, that the building will be named this, but that in the future, there are, there are opportunities to change- change that name for a variety of reasons, I would say, and the donor is aware of those. So we are contractually obligated withouts.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too will support the motion. I have a little bit of familiarity. I never can say that word with Mr. Wiley and Mr. McDonald and Mr. Bergman. And I know that it's in the best interest of the school to accept this gift, a very generous gift, and move forward accordingly. But my concern is that whenever there's a brand name change, how do we go about promoting that brand? When we go from the Johnson County Community College Hospitality and Culinary Academy, what efforts will we take so that nationwide and internationally, all of a sudden, the Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy becomes known to the nation? Because the brand of the hospitality program is widely known throughout the country and internationally as the Johnson County Culinary Program. So it's just, I guess, a challenge. I wouldn't have a nice meeting if I didn't challenge somebody, as I challenged my colleague, Mr. Cross. But I think that's something we should take into consideration, because we do have a terrific brand upon which to build. Thank you.
Mr. Gray back there, I'm not exactly sure what your title is, Chris, but I noticed he's listening to you. I know the foundation is interested in that, and I suppose the worst thing that happened would not be that when you hear Wharton School of Business, you think of University of Pennsylvania, that if it ended up, you heard Wiley Hospitality and Culinary Academy, you thought of Johnson County Community College. But I'm sure the logo and the name will be on anything that we brand with it. So, but it's worth noting, because we do have a brand out there that is recognized. Any other discussion? Not on, I'll explain that, under our facilities naming policy, a supermajority vote of at least five members is required for a naming. So it would be five out of six tonight would be required. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Oppose no? Matter carries six to zero. Thank you, trustee Ingram. Dr. Sopchik, you got a talk?
Thank you, trustee Musel. We'd like to thank the trustees for approving that recommendation. The other night, our foundation executive board met in the simulation center, and that center is there thanks to philanthropy. That's what got it started. The trustees had matched funds. But thanks to that initial startup by the philanthropic gift of Dr. Zamorowski, we now enjoy a regional and national reputation for excellence in healthcare simulation. So hopefully, this will also supplement our reputation at the HCA. So thank you very, very much. This is a great time of the year, as was evidenced before the meeting started with all the buzz in the room. And I'd like to follow up on that, because there's all kinds of recognition events and semester-end events, awards and recognitions that people are receiving, and I will share with you a few of those. If you were following me on Twitter and were one of my two hundred and sixty-six followers, you laugh, trustee Sharp.
Sorry. Fair monologue.
Thank you. You would know about some of these events. This past Tuesday, we had our GED graduation. One hundred graduates walked across the stage. Andy Anderson was our commencement speaker, and somehow managed to weave Homer into his address, which was a wonderful speech, Andy. Thank you. But I have to say that you were overshadowed by the incredible student speakers. Not to say that you didn't do a great speech, but the students were absolutely fantastic as they talked about their lives of adversity and how this college and the people of this college helped them overcome that adversity. I'd like to recognize Janice Blansett and her outstanding team, and how they work with our GED students is really amazing. So, thank you, Janice. May eighth was Mother's Day, and on May seventh, we hosted STEM It's a Girls Thing, which was a seminar for one hundred fifth and sixth grade girls from area schools. It was absolutely electrifying. If you thought there was a buzz in this room before this meeting, you should have been in the Nerman and the Hudson Auditorium when that started. And what was also interesting is that most of those, if not all of those, girls were accompanied by their mothers. So it was really a wonderful event. That was generously cosponsored by the Skill Builders Fund, which is related to Barbara Allen. It's her fund, and she was a major contributor to this event. We look forward to a future of doing more significant seminars with them. I'd like to recognize the group that put this together, the Career Pathways Team of Jenny Crum, Laura Sawyer, and Cindy Giddings, along with Denise Griffey, Melissa Jimenez, Sunitha Menon, Angie Sundaland, Ellen Wilkehe, and Deb Knudsen. A spectacular, spectacular Saturday morning. On April twenty-eighth, Professor Mark Radzinger and Assistant Professor Gretchen Thum in our Journalism and Media Communications Department sponsored the JCC Headline Award, which was given annually to a local marketing professional. The recipient comes to campus to talk about marketing and gives our students an incredible opportunity to listen, learn, network, and interact with these real marketing superstars. This year's recipient was John Cook. John is the CEO of VML Advertising, Marketing, a very exciting agency down in Kansas City. I think they're actually around the world. It was clear, and he made the point, that his agency is not Debrontosaurus, but a velociraptor. You had to have been there to understand that. It was a great presentation. He spoke about advertising in the twenty-first century. His firm is doing, they're doing commercials for the 2016 Olympics in Brazil, and he shared some of those with us. It was very, very neat. On April twenty-seventh, we had our athletic awards night. Dr. Weber was the featured speaker, did an outstanding job addressing the athletes and coaches. MVPs were recognized for each team. It was a great night. But perhaps the most significant achievement was that sixty-three percent of our student athletes post a three-point-oh or better GPA. So special thanks to everyone associated with our programs and to Carl Heinrich, the A.D. Also, on April twenty-seventh, we recognized our outstanding students. All of our students here are outstanding, but these are exemplary. When you listen to their stories, hear about their experience here at the college, the one thing that was common among them was their engagement, engagement with our members of faculty and staff. Truly, engagement is the key to student success. Pam Vassar, I'd like to recognize Pam for her terrific work with our students like this and arranging these programs. Kristy McWard did a terrific job working on the Cohen series, specifically Josh Turner. That event sold out. That was on April twenty-third. I believe some of you were in attendance. Accounting faculty, Adam Spulstra, along with students in his federal income tax class, volunteered to offer free assistance to taxpayers. They served one hundred and seventy-one taxpayers for a total of three hundred and ten thousand dollars in refunds. Next year, we will ask for ten percent of those refunds. Lindsay Welch, adjunct professor of speech, who advises our Alpha Iota Gamma chapter of Phi Theta Kappa, does a terrific job. Our chapter was recently recognized in many ways. For example, our PTK officer team received honorable mention at the Kansas-Nebraska Regional Awards. Our PTK chapter received distinguished recognition for their college project, and our PTK team attended the Nerd Nation Convention in D.C. If any of you would like to go next year to Nerd Nation, I think you would all qualify. Additionally, JCC debater, our debater, Eric Singleton, was selected to the 2015-2016 All-American Debate Team. There are only thirty students selected nationally, and Eric is one of those. Our campus will host 2017 Cross Examination Debate Association National Tournament. The tournament will be held next March, and will bring close to one thousand students and coaches from across the country to our campus. Sounds like a fantastic event. We have a couple media stars in the news. English professor Danny Alexander was interviewed on KCUR about one of the most important artists in pop music history, Mary Blyge. And our English professor Andrea Broomfield was guest on NPR's Central Standard, talking about her new book, Kansas City: A Food Biography. No one was interviewed on Fox Radio, nor Howard Stern. Kansas Cowboy, we hosted on our campus on April thirtieth, the Kansas Cowboy Jubilee. It was the first time. Exhibits of paintings, sculptures, quilts, and other memorabilia, scholarly lectures, sing-alongs, barn dancing, and trick roping, all revolving around Kansas cowboy culture. We also had country and western music performers, Tall Grass Express, Prairie Rose Rangers, and the Hot Club of Cowtown. So we're looking forward to next year's Cowboy Jubilee. This is an interesting event, World Quest 2016. World Quest 2016. It's in Kansas City. More than two hundred business professionals, academic, faculty, and community members participate in a global trivia competition. Our team consisted of Jay Antle, James Burns, Bond Falwell, James Leicher, Tom Patterson, and William Stockton. Our team competed at the highest level. They gave it their all, but they did not win the coveted World Quest trophy. It's my understanding they're already training for next year, because 2017 is going to be our year at World Quest. I'd like to recognize our staff and organizational development team under the leadership of Karen Martley. This team oversees and manages numerous events, recognizing many of our outstanding members of faculty and staff. Karen, thank you for all that you do at this time of the year. It's a lot, but it's well-received, and truly is one of the things that makes this place a very special place. And lastly, coming up on our commencement, professor of English Steve Gerson, who has taught here since nineteen seventy-eight, will be our commencement speaker. Steve spoke at Andy's farewell, and I have to say, it was fantastic, and we're super excited about his commencement address. So this is just a small sampling of what goes on here every day on our campus, and I'm honored to be able to share it with you, and that concludes my report.
Questions for Dr. Sopchik? Dr. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Another question. I, people ask, why do you serve on this board? And when one can experience the events that take place on this campus, and we're in a month where we'll experience a number of graduations, and Andy, thank you, it was a terrific speech you gave the other night. But as Dr. Sopchik has mentioned, for the outstanding student luncheon that we were able to attend and the GED graduation, we each and every one of us think we have tough times and challenges. But when you hear these stories of overcoming terrific challenges, and they then are so grateful to the people on this campus, who they have, which they have engaged, caring faculty members and caring volunteers and caring support people that give them hope and courage for a, I'm not sure my math is very good, Ron, but I think one of the testimonies was a young man over sixty, and when he stands in front of an audience and explains how he tried to break a cycle of dysfunction in his family and encouraged his kids to go to college, and he's finally decided to quit lying about when he graduated from high school, when he should have graduated in nineteen seventy-two, which he's been saying all along. The other night, he said, now I can, without guilt, say that I graduated from high school in two thousand and sixteen. I would encourage all of us as trustees to experience all of those events, and want the community to know that you have a faculty and a campus here that thousands and thousands of people have been grateful and give their thanks for the hope that they now have in their lives and the courage to move on to the next step. Because, Andy, we all need to find our ifa. Thank you.
Very well put. Trustee Lindstrom?
I just, I was going to echo some of the comments that Dr. Cook just made, and also recognize the fact that all of the things that Dr. Sopchik, President Sopchik, mentioned in tooting the horn of this institution, which I think needs to be done more often, and in the beginning of the program of this meeting, of recognizing the success and the acknowledgement that the businesses made toward Karen, you, and your staff and your program, I think those are all wonderful things that happen here that we need to be very vocal about, and I think that in large measure is a reason for Johnson County Community College and community colleges in general in the state of Kansas not being impacted by the state as other institutions and other aspects of government have been impacted as well.
Other comments? Thank you. Those are very appropriate. I think the graduation time for me is, I think everybody that's on this campus considers themselves a critical thinker, and sometimes we emphasize the critical too much. And graduation is the time when we can say, you know what? It works. And for all the kind of sometimes serious nitpicking and sometimes not-so-serious nitpicking that we do about how we run things, as critical thinkers, we do a pretty good job, and our faculty and staff do a great job of turning out kids whose families, whether it's the clear graduation for the challenged adults, or somebody getting their GED at age sixty-three, or somebody getting their associate's degree, is just as proud as somebody walking across the stage at Harvard, getting their doctorate this year, and probably in many ways harder earned. And so I think, as we're all critical thinkers, let's take advantage during the month of May to think positive, and one of my favorite quotes always is that God made it so it's not easy for the human body to either kick yourself in the tail or pat yourself on the back, but we could pat ourselves on the back a little bit. Let's move on to the Faculty Association Report. Mr. Palchak, I understand you have an introduction to make.
No, new business?
Oh, I'm sorry. There's no old business, and I'm listed under new business, and I'm hoping someone will remind me. Nominate? No? All right. I think the new business was going to be a report from the nominating committee. Are you prepared to make that report?
Mr. Chair, we are.
Okay, please.
And if you'd like that at this point, we're happy.
I'm so excited to get to the Faculty Association. Please report that back.
Last month, you appointed trustee Lindstrom and I to serve on the nominating committee, and while we won't vote on these officially until our June board meeting, I wanted to bring them to you. We have moved into a cycle, I guess, unofficially in the last couple of years, for the officers, particularly the chair, to serve two-years term, and we think there's a lot of advantage to that, because, at least in my case, I just kind of learned what was going on. It was time to leave. Mr. Musel hit the track running full speed right out of the chute in the first month, so it wasn't, he was real strong from the get-go. But we're recommending that the chairman be Greg Musel, vice chairman Stephanie Sharp, treasurer Lee Cross, secretary Nancy Ingram. Management committee, to stay as it is, Jerry Cook, David Lindstrom, Lee Cross. Human resources, Nancy Ingram and Henrico Sandate. Learning quality, and I haven't spoken with Henrico about that, but those are kind of the committees you come on when you just start. They're all important and very important committees. Learning quality, Lee Cross and Henrico Sandate. Audit committee, Stephanie Sharp, Greg Musel. Collegial steering, Stephanie Sharp, Greg Musel. I would say that we have felt that the chair and vice chair really need to serve on both of those committees, and is the reason for them there. Foundation, Nancy Ingram and Stephanie Sharp. KACC, Jerry Cook, and JSert, David Lindstrom. So we'll have a written copy of that for you or email that out to you for your consideration. We'll vote on that in June. The other issue that we probably should discuss in June, Mr. Chair, is that with the change in elections now to June, new trustees will take office the second Monday of January. And we have assigned our committees on our fiscal year from July one to June thirty. So we can either continue with that, or I believe we do have a policy that states this. We would probably have to change our policy if we decide to change the roles of the officers from effect of July one to effect of the second Monday in January, I think is the exact terminology. So not to be discussed tonight, but something for us to think about and discuss in the future. If we don't make that change now, then I guess we would say in July, or get to January, we'd change our officers again after a six-month period. So just something to consider. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I'll mention one other item of new business. Trustees, you will be receiving the forms that we have used in the past several years for the evaluation of our president, and at our executive session at our June meeting, we will, you will be asked to give your feedback, and then we will discuss that in an executive session at the end of our June meeting. Okay, that's all the new business. Mr. Palchak, please.
Good evening, and thank you, Chairman Musel, the board of trustees, Dr. Sopchik, and his executive cabinet. Thank you. No, I'm not Dick Clark, Carter, but my daughter, Sophia, some of the faculty Sophia, that some of the faculty and staff know, recommended I wore a bow tie on my last day, and she picked it out. Hi, Sophia. We're in the last day of the teaching semester for the classes, starting on Saturday, May 14th is our final exam. Week commences, and our graduation for all of our AAASs will be on Saturday, Friday, the 20th of May. The FA has completed the election of new officers serving the college from May of 2016 through May of 2017. The new president of the Faculty Association of the College is, wait, let me tell you a little bit about him. He's got his BA in Philosophy from UC, which is University of California, Santa Cruz. He's got his Masters of Arts in Philosophy from the University of Colorado, it's Colorado State University Boulder, I guess University of Colorado, Colorado University, get that right. His PhD in Philosophy from UC Santa Barbara, University of California, Santa Barbara. And for those of you who are not familiar, UC Santa Cruz are the slugs. Boulder, we all know, is the Buffaloes, and UC Santa Barbara is the Gauchos. So he's moved up the food chain. His current interests are in comparative philosophy and philosophy of education. He's a past president or chair of the Peer Review Council, also past chair of Ed Affairs this last year. In fact, he's currently both right this moment. Oh, yesterday, sorry. He also just got elected vice president of the Board of Directors of Asian Studies Development Program Chapter of the East-West Center Alumni Association. He also, he's also a current member of the American Philosophies Association, the Society of Asian and Comparative Philosophy, and North America Association of Political Philosophy. And of course, he's a president of the Faculty Association at JCC, or we better let known as the College, which he'll represent with capable skills and dignity. Without further ado, may I introduce the new president of the Faculty Association, Dr. Dennis Arjo.
Thank you very much. That all sounded quite grand when you hear it spoken out loud. Just say a couple of things. First, let me thank Ron for a very good year as president of the FA and for his help in transitioning me to this new role. Ron was one of the first people who started to encourage me to run for this when I was still, really had no thought of doing so. So hopefully we'll be giving him credit after a year and not blamed for getting me into this position. But thank you, Ron. Also, let me introduce my executive counsel. I will not be doing this alone. So my vice president is going to be Melanie Harvey, who is here. She's in the chemistry department. The secretary is going to be Rhonda Marlowe from math. Returning is treasurer is Brett Cooper, also from math, and Jim Liker is going to be the UNISERV rep. So that'll be the new executive counsel of the FA. So at that, I'd just like to say I'm very happy to be here. It's a privilege to serve. I'm looking forward to working with the board and administration and making sure the faculty continues to contribute to this great institution. If there are any questions, I will entertain them.
Thank you for service on Ed Affairs, which is maybe the least recognized by most people and one of the most important places we do. But are there other comments? I mean, I think we're all looking forward to having you as Faculty Association President. Lee?
Thank you.
Trustee Cross?
So, Arjo, you guys, you emailed us a resolution earlier today?
Yes, I did.
What was that about?
Well, there's a couple of ways you could look at that. I think it reflects some frustration on the part of some faculty as to the role of the KACC, largely stemming from the events having to do with House Bill 2531. So it's a kind of complicated backstory to that. So I look forward to kind of maybe talking about that as we go forward.
Thank you very much.
Philosopher?
Yes.
What's the first question, what are they asked? The question is, why? I know you're, I know how committed you are. I'm kind of, I'm being sarcastic.
Definition, I've heard of philosophy, is from William James, who said it's an unusually stubborn attempt to think clearly. So a range of questions we will consider are endless. I'm not sure this is true, but we like to say, apparently people have tested this. If you go on Google and search anything and you start clicking links, after about five or six links, you'll get the philosophy. So underlying everything are there philosophical questions.
Thank you for your service. Jerry?
Trustee Musil, that was a lot better answer and a lot better question than the one Andy Anderson had to answer on his first day of teaching when his student asked, what's the price of a raccoon pelvis? That was excellent. Thank you.
And I'm not sure where raccoons fit on the food chain between slug and gaucho, but I think it's between the two.
One more correction. UC Santa is the banana slug, not just any old slug.
Not just any old slug, okay.
If you're not familiar with the creature, they are about this long and bright yellow. They live in the redwoods, and they're, they're kind of cherished in the Santa Cruz Mountains.
Tastes like chicken.
I would also say that, I knew that, I corrected him on the banana slugs, because UC Santa Barbara and Southwestern College are always on the top 10 weirdest mascots list, and that's the only reason I knew the banana slugs, because we're the mound builders. So you guys were always one higher. We were usually number two, you were number one weirdest.
We fought for that. When I was a student at UC Santa Cruz, the chancellor thought it was time for the university to become more serious. He wanted to change the mascot to something like the sea lions. And there was a bit of a backlash, though foolishly he put it to the students for a vote. The banana slugs won by landslide. It's been the banana slugs ever since.
Look forward to a good year.
So do I.
Be it quiet or noisy, we will work together and make it a good year.
Indeed.
Thank you. Joe?
Ron, thank you, Dennis. Could you step back up to the podium? Now, since you're no longer head of the FA.
If this is a roast, I get the last laugh.
It seems like we've been saying goodbye to you for the last several meetings, and not that we were anxious for you to move on. But I just want to, I've been silent. I just want to say a few words. And, you know, there are, I think there are a lot of tough jobs on this campus, and so many people do such a great job in them. But as head of the FA, I think you, that's one of the toughest jobs, and I'm sure Dennis is, I can't wait to get into that. But it's challenging. It's a tough one, because you have so many constituencies that you've got to work with and to satisfy. And I can, I really relate to that. You know, it takes a considerable skill set to get the job done, and you've certainly demonstrated that over your time as president of the FA. And I just wanted to congratulate you on everything you've accomplished as the FA president. I'd also like to thank you on how you conducted yourself in that role. You know, in my case, I know that you were extremely straightforward. You were direct. You were tough. You were no-nonsense. You were honest. You were humorous, fortunately, and trustworthy. But perhaps the most important word to describe what I saw is that you were selfless. It was never about you, and I would like to thank you for that. So on behalf of the administration, I think I can say that, and myself, we would like to thank you for your service. And I'm sure your family is thrilled with you stepping down now, but I bet your students are going to be especially happy, because now you can dedicate 100% of yourself to them. So thank you very much, Ron, for your service.
Thanks very much.
We're gonna let you sit down, but there might be some other tributes. So, Trustee Lindstrom?
I'm just gonna briefly say, and because of your daughter, you're also very dapper
I'm aware of this other bow tie that she had, which was one that had candy tape stripes on it.
Okay, Johnson County Education Research Triangle report, trustee Lindstrom.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We did not meet since the last board meeting here. So briefly, let me just say that our, I'll report on receipts for the month of April were, on the 1/8 sales tax were $1,304,45 and 25 cents, which may not mean much to anyone, but if you look at that compared to last year, it's 6.42% greater this year than last year on receipt. So that speaks well for the economy here in Johnson County. And then finally, the next meeting, as I mentioned last meeting, the next meeting of the Johnson County Educational Research Triangle will be on September 20th, 2016, 7:30 a.m. at the KU Edwards Campus, best building, room 315. And that concludes my report.
Questions for trustee Lindstrom? If not, we'll move on to the Kansas Association of Community College Trustees, Dr. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next meeting will be June 9th, 10th, and 11th in Hutchinson, Kansas, at Hutchinson Community College. And this is, this is a time when we'll look at changing leadership of the association, but also kind of reviewing where we've been and where we're going. A reference was made to the resolution, Dennis, and as the representative of the KACC, I appreciate the candor and how your, how the faculty is feeling about that. I would say that in some of the issues that are included there are issues that we certainly have been addressing and discussing. And the point we always have is, what's our responsibility to the larger organization? And we have tried to take the position that we want to raise the level of community college presence in the state of Kansas, and being the largest college in the state, we think we have a professional responsibility to do that. However, if those actions are at the risk of diminishing the impact of this college, we continue to review those and take issue with those. So that's something that we have been discussing and reviewing, at least individually, for some time. And we'll consider that as we go, as we move forward. There are some state issues that certainly have differing points of view. We have colleges that are trying to survive in the state. We're trying to survive on a level of deliverance of the, of the teaching and learning system that we have, and so we'll continue to support that as best as we can. And, but when, when the state efforts diminish what we can do here, then we'll, we'll take a look at that. But anyway, I appreciate the reference, Dr. Sobchak, to the Leadership Academy. That is something that the KACC decided a few years ago, we needed to try and provide an environment for aspiring new leaders in our community colleges to grow and develop. And I think reference was made to the value of the networking. And one of our responsibilities, I believe, is to understand the challenges, just like we do at a GED program, to understand these unique challenges and provide the support system we can to those, to those particular students. We also have a trustee development program that we're trying to implement in the state, and so there are a number of benefits we get from KACC as well. So we have to sort through the individual differences we have and look at the overall goodness we might achieve as a, as a larger family. So with that, I think Dr. Sobchak and I are planning to attend, and we'll be looking forward to that meeting and a report to the, to the board following their, thank you. No further comments.
Trustee Cross, did you have comments?
I did have a comment, and really just a story to relate to trustee Cook. When I've come on to the board, I've been critical at times of the administration, perhaps some of the votes or policies of this board, but it is with deep respect and admiration that I've helped do my best to learn what, what I know and what I try to apply. Among those things that I've learned was from trustee Cook and his relationship with the KACC in working to relate how difficult a time that many of our sister organizations and institutions have across the state. And the story I wanted to share was with a client of mine in Thomas County, I believe that's Colby. And we were having dinner, lunch one day, and he relates to me how excited he was, this 55, 60-year-old farmer, about the speakers that they bring to Colby County Community College and how much pride he takes in having a college there. And I just wanted to thank Mr. Cook, trustee Cook, for his service to that organization. I think he helps explain that we're human beings in Johnson County. We don't have clove and hooves in the rest of the state, as sometimes my family likes to tell me that we do. But that's a joke, just in case anybody's wondering. Trustee Sharp, I wasn't sure if she knew. So I just want to thank trustee Cook for his service to that organization, and I know it's a tumultuous relationship we have with them. I've, I see the FA's resolution. I respect it. I understand it. As I said at their meeting last week and with trustee Ingram present, I do think that that organization does serve a useful purpose in terms of helping us get the funding we do get from Topeka and lots of other things that we do and do accomplish here. So I'm not ungrateful for the things that are done here or done in coordination with other organizations. Please don't let my criticism be any symbol of a lack of commitment or loyalty or respect that I do have for the administration and the board. And I thank you for those comments.
Foundation report from our liaison trustee Ingram.
Yes, the Foundation Board Executive Committee met this past Tuesday, May the 10th. There were many, many reports. I will highlight several of them. Work on Some Enchanted Evening has begun, and Tom and Chaney Mitchell will be the chairs, and Adam Hamilton will be honored as the 2016 Johnson County of the Year. We are excited to share that we received a gift agreement for nearly $150,000 to purchase a new Steinway piano for the Carlson Center, and a $30,000 gift agreement for the first-ever Endowment Fund for Performing Arts Education. The Foundation's, the Board Developments Committee, excuse me, to work, will examine the best board structure from the Foundation. This will be an ongoing discussion in 2016. The conversation relates mainly to the best way to involve our large number of members as well as the number of times the executive committee and directors should meet each year for proper engagement. And finally, Tuesday, May 24th, will be the Foundation's annual luncheon in the Commons 1.5 North Dining Room. We hope all trustees and cabinet members will join us. And that concludes my report.
Can I say something?
Yes, you may. Dr. Sobchak.
The pursuit of a gift to fund a Steinway piano has been going on for decades. And so congratulations to the Foundation for making that happen. It's one of the things that our Performing Arts Center has never really had, was a Steinway. And so every time we'd have a high-level performer, the college would have to rent a Steinway, because they'll only play on a Steinway. So this is a huge accomplishment, and thank you for making that report.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, we're ready for the consent agenda. The consent agenda includes a number of routine and consensus items that are typically considered collectively and approved in a single motion and vote. Any member of the board may request that a particular item be removed from the consent agenda and considered debated and voted upon separately. Are there any items any board member would like to remove from the consent agenda and have considered as a separate item? If none, I'm ready to hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved?
Then moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Not all in favor say yes?
Yes.
Suppose no. Motion carries unanimously. We have no executive session scheduled for tonight, so we are ready for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to adjourn. All in favor say yes?
Yes.
Suppose no. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you all for coming and staying.